2025 regular board meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Mr. Steblow is going to do our indication and this student is going to lead us in the public picture.
Father, thank you for the blessings of this day and your grace to us. Lord, thank you for this special time of the school year when we get to recognize excellence. And we've got a lot to recognize, a lot of great students, administrators, teachers, that make Pickens County schools what they are, and we're grateful for that. So, Lord, we pray you bless this time together tonight as we celebrate. Thank you for the gifts that you give us and your blessings to this community. And I ask that in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every intention of its own. I would like to thank our greeters for tonight's meeting, Dr. Canyon Witty and Dr. Angela Critter. Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Say.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The agenda has been approved. Dr. Thomas, would you introduce the recognition for tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. We're excited about tonight. Looking forward to recognizing several of our teachers, several of our kids, several of our athletic teams, and it's going to be a great event tonight. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Chris Parker, to get things started.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. While we're getting started, let me give you a few directions. First off, you know, our goal and Dr. Thomas' vision will lead North Georgia in academics, athletics, arts, CTSOs, everything else. We want to celebrate all of it today, so I hope everybody can stay. I know we got a band concert and stuff, but I hope you can hang around regardless of when we call you to celebrate all these groups. Really excited you took some time to be here. It's a busy time of year, right, Mr. Coles? So, while they're getting set up on table, we're going to do, your people, if you're adults with you, should know what order we're going in, but when you're about to be called, you see Mr. Thompson in the back, he's got an order, it'll kind of get you organized over there. We'll call you out, shake your sponsor's hand or your coach's hand. Come out here, shake the board member's hands. Don't be scared, it's okay. We want to show these board members what all you guys did this year. I think this was probably the best year, I really mean this, the best year for all those things combined that we've ever had. Give them a round of applause. I think if you combine athletics, academics, arts, CTSOs, then it's the best year we've ever had. So, I'm really proud of you guys. I want to show the board members all your accomplishments. So, come up here, shake their hands, smile, stand right there, you're going to look in the back, Mary's going to take your picture. Then when they start clapping, I may start to clap for you. This is code for it's time to go. And then you come this way, walk off the stage on this side, we'll have the next group going. So, we got a lot of people, so we're going to need to do it efficiently. If you guys can wait till we announce all the people and then clap for them all at once and all that. But thank you again for being here. It's really exciting, and we want to take time to honor the work you've done and show our school board, our elected officials, all the work that they put in allowing us to have all these different programs. So, thank you to these guys, and thank you to all of you and the parents of all of you. So, let's get started. Our first group, like always, we're going to start with academics. The first group's our 2024 College Board Recognition Program, the honors. Mr. Coles has got us some names here. We're going to recognize all these people. Hold your applause to the end, please. Abigail Barber, Larry Flores, Cassandra Hamrick, Jackson Hosmer, Farrah Jones, Zoe Kelly, Grayson Luddington, Peyton McDaniel, Micah Newton, Diego Rivera, Alyssa Ross, Adeline Wood, and Ashlyn Zipsey.
Yes, when they call you.
Yeah, when they call your name, you can come up. I'm sorry, I didn't say that part. That's a bad teacher. I did not win a Teacher of the Year. We're going to get to that. When we call your name, come on down. These are 2024 College Board Recognition Program honors. I don't know, if you guys will stay right there and take a picture. I don't know if you guys were at honors night last night, but I heard a lot of these same names many times. These people are probably tired from walking up on the stage so many times. All right, you guys look at the back. Y'all are setting the precedent for everyone else tonight. Look toward the back, just take a picture.
Get the boards.
Yeah. We can't see the board.
I get a little hotter. All right, one more.
All right, just give them a round of applause. Our next group, maybe some of these same people. Our next group is the 2026, class of 2026 UGA Certificate of Merit Scholar. First up, Caitlin Bailey, J.C. Beck, come on down, let me call your name, Eli Green, Savannah Cantrell, Rachel Clayton, Xander Coles, Reese Davis, Sophia Durston, Angelina Grizzle, Jackson Hosmer, Lily James, Ansley Jones, Hayden Jones, Kaylee Kearney, Dylan Lo, Peyton McDaniel, Micah Newton, Brandy Overton, Matty Parks, Carly Patterson, Savannah Redford, Santiago Romero, John Rodney, Devin Schumake, Ellison Steinhour, Tyler Weatherby, Rowan White, and Ashlyn Zipsey. Let's give these students a round of applause. All right, thank you, guys. Give them a round of applause. 2026, we expect to see all you guys at senior honors night next year. The third group we're going to recognize is a series of individual recognition from the high school. Mr. Coles, we had a great year at the high school. Mr. Coles excited to recognize these students. I'm going to read their name and the accomplishment we have for them. So, some of them are going to get tired walking up here a few times. First one is Grayson Luddington, Most Outstanding Student Award for 2024 University of North Georgia Summer Honors Program. So, Grayson, come on up. Tyler Eberhart from UNG Summer Honors Program. Elena Hilton, UNG Summer Honors Program. Riley Deering, 2024 Governor's Honors Program for Mathematics. Christian Wright, 2024 Governor's Honors Program for Music. Jeremy Westbrook, Commended Student for the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Emma Christensen, 2024-25 Westbridge National College Finalist. Micah Newton, 2025 Georgia Youth Leadership Award recipient for 21st Century Leaders. Sarah Catherine Smith, Optimus Club Oratorical Contest, first place. Landon Williams, perfect score on the Georgia math test. Perfect score. Like me and you, Mr. Coles. Perfect score. Another one, Eric Malcolm, perfect score on the Georgia Math League Test. Jack Tatum, Amacola EMC Youth Washington DC Tour. And Farrah Jones, also Amacola EMC Washington Youth Tour. These are some of your brightest students at the high school for our school board to see, some of our absolute best academic students. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, thank you very much. Next up, we're going to recognize the Pickens High School Academic Team. Finished third in our region. Got a big region on that, proud of them. Probably some of these same students. Ms. Shawna Thompson is our sponsor for this group. She can come up if she's here. Also, these are our participants. Emma Christensen, Keaton Cox, Devin Schumake, Eli Breen, Bailey Duncan, and Savannah Redford. Those students can come up. That is Ms. Thompson here, representing third place in the region as our school academic team. All right, let's give them a round of applause. Next up, we've got the Pickens High School Laws of Life SA winners. In ninth grade, Allison Wilson. Tenth grade, Michaela Olivia. Eleventh grade and overall winner, Tessa Clark. And our 12th grade winner, Emily Coley. The next group, they can start making their way to the back while they come up, is our first place District Project Achievement Group. Name them next so they can start working their way up. Y'all come on, homie child, shake their hand. All right, thank you very much. The Laws of Life SA winners, we there? Now, we're going to do first place at District Project Achievement. Micah Newton, Reese Davis, Sheila Flores, Sarah Flores, and Sky Paredes. Let's get them around the applause. There you go. All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have an individual recognition at Pickens Junior High. It's Dr. Petty, recently Dr. Petty. Dr. Petty, so we're going to recognize Townsend Rickenbacher. Townsend attended the Georgia State Girls of the American Revolution Convention on Saturday in Augusta, last Saturday, where she was recognized and received her award and $250 as the eighth grade state winner, state winner, whole state of Georgia, for the DAR Historical Essay Contest. There were over 2,000 entries. This is also the second straight year she's won. So, 2,000 entries, number one in the state Pickens County. Great job, Townsend. And her teacher, Lauren Kilchrist, you want to come, Lauren? You want to come join us? Pickens Page Turners are next, for those of you who haven't read, line up. All right, thank you, Townsend. State champion. Next, we're going to recognize our winners for our Pickens Page Turners. Really focused on literacy this year. You guys did a great job. From Hill City Elementary, Anna Hernandez, Book Review first place. Hill City Elementary, I'm sorry, that's Harmony Elementary, right? Hill City Elementary, Kate Mason, Book Review second place. Matt McConnell, Hill City Book Review third place. Isabella Contreras, Hill City Fan Art first place. Sarah Hooker, JMS Fan Art second place. Amelia Meldrum, Fan Art third place from JMS. Atlas George, Hill City Poetry first place. Lydia Bernard, Hill City Poetry second place. Kate Mason, Hill City Poetry third place. And Devon Kinsey, JMS Poetry third place. Come on down, look at this group. Thank you very much. Page Turner winners, throw your hands. And before we move on to JMS recognitions, thank you to our school board. You know, our school board makes all these programs possible. They can't be everywhere at once, they don't see all these things. So, when you come up here, it's okay, smile, don't be scared, but they do make all this possible. So, thank you to them. We're going to recognize our JMS individual recognitions here, okay? Ms. Coles has sent us these great individuals, these students who have excelled this year. Kinsley Cole Young, first place in plant science for our district science fair, competed at the Northwest Georgia Regional Science Fair at Georgia Highlands College. Ella Rose Green, come on down, Ella. First place in chemistry in our district science fair and competed at the Northwest Georgia Regional Science Fair at Georgia Highlands College. Silas Robinson Boy, young Georgia author's fifth place recipient. Young Georgia author's regional winner. And Elizabeth Michelle Youngblood, young Georgia author's sixth place recipient for the district, also third place in the Optimist Essay Contest, where she competed at students at the high school level. So, she beat some high school, because she probably beat me and Mr. Coles too. All right, very good, thank you. Next, we're going to recognize our kindergarten to fourth grade district Young Authors Competition winners. These are our young authors. Mia Dixon in kindergarten, Noah Killian, first grade, Bianca Work, second grade, Levi Blaylock, third grade, and Paisley Moody, fourth grade. Come on down, Mr. Hunter is coming with them. Mr. Hunter, how about that? Yeah, you guys, come on down. These are our young authors. All right, next up, we've got the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. So, you guys can know your own name, start making your way to the back. The Student Advisory Council was a group that applied for this. Dr. Thomas met with them throughout the school year. This is our first year doing that, where students met directly with the superintendent to know their concerns, what's going well, what's not, and we talked all year. It was a great group. First up, Owen Johnson, Olivia Pissaro, Townsend Rickenbacher, Darby Stanley, Ava Fernandez, Deanna Butler, Isabella Higginbar, Bethany Franklin, Devin Schumake, Ella Johnson, Addie Kleinberg, and Lily Howko. All right, thank you, guys. Superintendent Student Advisory Council, very good. Next up, we're going to start recognizing our Fine Arts Groups, okay? We have some Fine Arts winners here tonight. Coach Thomas is going to help us recognize those. Our PHS Chorus recognition, some of these will be at the band, I know, so they may not be here, but Christian Wright was GMEA All-State Chorus. Willow Duncan, GMEA All-State Chorus. I think they're probably a family. Are they coming? Oh, look, Christian came anyway. Absolutely, that's what I'm talking about. If you guys haven't heard Christian sing, this guy's talented. He won the state, he's a state champ too. He's coming up later. I hope he's here long enough. State champ. This is your All-State Chorus, guys. Christian, you might as well just keep on walking. We've got some drama recognitions, our drama. Did anybody see the play Anastasia? I was able to see that. And he did a great job all year. So, first up, Christian, come on around. Christian Wright, Region 63A, first place boy soloist. Ava Harrison, Georgia Thespian's All-State Theater. Farrah Jones, Georgia Thespian, State Thespian Officer and writing the theater in our school's state proclamation. Sidney Woodward, overall superior in Thespian. Farrah Jones again, Pam Ware Leadership Scholarship. Eli Scroggins, GHSA Region 63A, One Act All-Star Cast. And then Sarah Harbin, who's our drama director. Ms. Harbin's here. Yeah, very good, Ms. Harbin. Great job. Christian, just stay right there. Shake hands again. So, we're going to recognize Christian by himself. Christian was the Georgia High School Association 3A State Champion, Boy Soloist in our literary area. I know there's a lot of me that are learning this stuff. That would be the same as somebody winning the state championship in golf or tennis or anything else. He was the state champion. The GHSA is a sporting event that we get points for, right, Coach Thomas? And this is the state champion. I mean, this is a great accomplishment. We only have so many in the whole school's history, right, of state champions? Great job, Christian. Give Christian one more round of applause. Our Pickens Junior High Chorus, we're going to recognize Evie Hendricks. Is she here? Come on down. All-State Chorus, junior high, so a future Christian. And we got wrestling next couple weeks. Get in your mind right. And softball. And cheerleading, basketball's honors. All right, we're going to recognize athletics now to our board members. We're going to recognize some of our athletic accomplishments. First, we're going to start with wrestling. Coach Sam Wigginton, the coach of wrestling. We've got two students we're going to recognize. Jacoby Stanley, state runner-up. Carly Rowl, fourth in the state, and the first female wrestler in Pickens High School history to place at the state tournament. Hey, Kendra, y'all give them softball girls a go in the back. Let's go. Your coach should already tell you that. All right, thank you. Great job. Yeah, Carly, you can just stay there. So, although she was also the first female wrestler in the school's history to place, she also was on the Final Four softball team. How about our baseball and softball? The varsity softball team finished the season with a 28-9 record, fourth place in the state. For the first time in program history, the state made back-to-back trips to Columbus. We featured three region champions, some on the road, earned wins in Southeast Bullock and West Lawrence in Columbus. This group also, by the way, board members, I'll highlight your attention to this. This group on the stage has an overall GPA of 95.8. J.C. Beck, J.B. Beck, Kylie Bozeman, Skylle Crenshaw, Lexi Grizzle, Kaylee Hoferd, Ellie Hollis, Madeline Johnson, Ansley Jones, McKenna Moody, Hannah Parks, Carly Patterson, Carly Rowl, Kendra Stewart, Coach Morrissey, Coach Pinson, and all the other people that helped with this. Thank you. Great job. Final Four, let's give them a round of applause. All right, next up, we've got varsity cheerleading. Now, cheerleading has a couple of different teams. They have football cheerleading, silent, they have game day cheerleading, they have competition cheerleading. We excelled in all of them this year. The traditional competition team claimed its first ever region championship this season, went on to finish in the Elite Eight state competition. Give them a round of applause. They're in the highest score in county history, marking the fourth consecutive top-10 finish in the state. And the game day cheer competition, cheer team competed in only its second season, finishing fifth in the state. We got Bella Bruce, Kinsley Damon, Brianna Egley, Opal Faber, Sophia Fitcher, Izzy Garza, Sadie Hall, Emma Haynes, Ella Haynes, Mackenzie Johnson, Kennedy Kimbrel, Ella McIntyre, Maddie Mooney, Lexi Payne, Abby Roper, Tori Sarantis, Bailey Stalker, McKinley Thomas, Alexis Turner, Carol Winkler, Haley Armour, Jenna Duncan, Lacey Epps, Ariana Hand, Isabella Higginbar, Kendra Hill, Caitlin Holden, Elizabeth Hurst, Kylie Hutchinson, Sophia Lindsay, Jaden Neighbors, Ansley Raines, Tatum Turner, and our head coach is Liz Prent. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, boys basketball, let's go. Our varsity boys basketball team was exciting to watch this year. They finished second in the region, made to the Sweet 16. They finished with a 28-2 record. Their 28 wins, 27-game winning streak, starting the season 25-0 in the regular season, are all first in school history, historic milestones. Losing two games, the fewest we ever lost in school history. They reached the Sweet 16 for the second year in a row. Brock Barton, Colby Black, Brody Bryant, Dodge Davis, Parker Davis, Camden Jones, Wyatt Jones, Jonah Jordan, Kaden Kirkoff, Caleb Lamford, Jedidiah Lamford, Donnie Marshall, Jamin Martin, D.J. Mitchell, Montigo Morgan, Aiden Moonmouth, Sawyer Purdy, McCord Purdy, Landon Wright, coaches Bob Martin, Josh Danenfels, or Aries Johnson. Great group right here. Let's get them all in the picture now. All right, thank you to our basketball team. Stories taken, great job, guys. Next up, we've got a girls' basketball team. You'll see a pattern here. This is another Elite Eight team, region champions. The Nets captured their 12th region championship in program history, first since 2021, finished 27-3, the second most wins in a season behind the 1974 state championship team. The Nets also earned their first, the number-one overall state tournament in this new power ranking system of the Elite Eight, had a great season. Sophia Adams, Kylie Bozeman, Riley Deering, Teagan Deering, Ruby Flatt, Kaylee Hoferd, Ellie Hollis, Bree Jewell, Skylar Latham, Reagan Luddington, Bella Martin, Tanya Rivera, Ellison Steinhour, and then our coach, Jordan Shaw, Kobe Shaw. Great job, young ladies. Give them a round of applause. Oh, wait, you didn't get it.
Well, they were standing up.
Well, they were standing up. There you go.
Good job. All right, next we got swimming. Kailin Martin was a region champion in the 103 state qualifier. And our coach Melissa Bramble. Let's get them around in the crowd. Great job. All right, thank you, guys. Swimming, great job. Next up, we've got a junior high now. We're on the junior high, Dr. Thomas. The junior high boys' tennis team was the Mountain League Champions. They went 11-0 undefeated. Nobody could touch them in the mountains. Undefeated this year, we're gonna recognize them. John Saltino, Will McDaniel, Eli Norton, Kellen Evans, Jonah Newton, Sundays Pugini, Gabriel Akins, Max Hosmer, Reeves Leathers. And then Claire Eubanks was a coach and Jessica Longreed coaching. Come on in. Undefeated team right here. All right, very good. Thank y'all. Great job. So we know we had a good year in academics. We know we had a good year in the arts, athletics. We had all those Final Four teams, Elite Eights, whatever. Got one team still playing, by the way, in track and field. Now we're gonna talk CTA, where we do well, we have, and we did this year too. First group, Skills USA, Construction Technology Display Skills USA. We had a state championship group. Dennis Wilson, Lee Wilson, the sponsor. Jonathan Rodney, Camden Montgomery, Mel Davis. We also had, this group also, we had a group that finished fourth in the state in woodworking, Mr. Wilson sponsors. Serenity Mahon, Lawrence Keith, and Mason White. So two groups in the top four won a state champion out of Skills USA. Let's get them around in the crowd. For HOSA, Human Growth and Development, we had a region top-five finisher, Perrin Glasgow. Blake Honie is the sponsor. Ms. Honie's here. If she's not, we can bring his Glasgow here. Let's give her a round of applause. Next, we got our FFA, Poultry Evaluation, finished 11th in the nation. Nation. There's only 50 states, so we weigh better than just state champion there. Nation. We got Jeremy Westbrook, McKenna Jarrett, Blake Hobgood, Amanda Bramble. Let's get them all in the state championship. Ms. Felton-Mall, Mr. Cantrell, their sponsors. Ms. Parker with CTA, great job to them. We by yourself, Jeremy? Get you an individual picture there. Like Picture Day, get you a solo. Good job, Jeremy. You might be staying. We got the rest of our FFA recognitions here. Elena Hilton, Agriculture Sales, LD, fourth in the state. Bryson Loomis, same thing, fourth in the state. Jonathan Rodney, Agriculture Sales, fourth in the state. Isaac Kuiper, Agriculture Sales, fourth in the state. Elena Hilton also qualified for state agriculture education competition. Ava Fernandez qualified for state livestock evaluation. Madeline Hicks qualified for state livestock evaluation. Weston Cantrell qualified for state livestock evaluation. Tatum Reese qualified for state livestock evaluation. Annalise Abbott and Amanda Bramble, both state FFA degree recipients. Eli Green, also a state FFA degree recipient. And Elena Hilton, also a state FFA degree recipient. Mary Grace Mackey, another degree recipient. Addison Lewis, Agriculture Marketing Plan Career Development with Ellie Darnell and Ava Fernandez. They finished fourth in the state. Addison, Ellie, and Ava, great job. Let's give all these students a round of applause. Also, before y'all leave, because you know I'm off-script and I need to keep a job, did you guys know that Dr. Thomas, my boss, he won an FFA award? Dr. Thomas was the star administrator for the North Georgia region. So not just picking, having all the North Georgia, all those districts come together, picking administrators, recognize, I recognize Dr. Thomas. So Dr. Thomas, you also can take a picture with the board. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, guys. Next, we got our FBLA recognitions. We've got Zoe Kelly, Seventh in the state in marketing. Farrah Jones, Ninth in the state, Public Policy and Advocacy. Farrah, you gotta be getting tired from walking up here so much. And Ginger Rosati is their sponsor. Give them a round of applause. All right, thank you. Great job. All right, we got TSA recognition next. TSA. Jackson Hosmer was a conference speaker at the Fall Leadership Conference. Emily Caro, Fall Leadership Conference Speaker. Savannah Redford, State Qualifier, Eighth Place in Transportation Modeling. And Pearl Fitz, State Qualifier, Eighth Place in Children's Story. I think these students are at the band. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, Master 4H Status, First in the State Congress, is Micah Newton and Sheila Flores. If they're here, come on down. Micah Newton, Sheila Flores. Let's give them a round of applause. Yeah, we'll wait on my. Next, we're gonna do the PJHS FFA recognitions after that. Mike is another, and he's gonna get tired from walking up here. Very good. Thank you, Michael. Next up, we've got the Pickens Junior High FFA recognitions. These are our future high school recognitions, right? Elsie Eubanks, come on in. Abby Benton, Oakley Manly, and Lacey Bale. These are state poultry evaluation winners. Come on down. And their sponsor, Mr. Dobson. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Thomas, we're gonna move, that's the student recognition that we have. We're gonna move into our staff recognitions at this time. The first group is a group I've never participated in, but I'm jealous of them. They do a great job, our Teachers of the Year. For some reason, they never asked me to be the Teacher of the Year. I don't know. But I do know some good teachers. And we got six good ones we're recognizing tonight. We'll have our banquet next Tuesday at the Teacher of the Year banquet. We'll crown an actual District Teacher of the Year among these six. So first up, and we can give them a round of applause as they come. Amanda Abbott, Hill City, come on down. Kristy Art, Harmony. Mallory Childers, Tate. Charlene Starwell, Jasper Middle. Kimberly Pat, Pickens Junior High. And Kristy Moss, Pickens High School. Great job. Thank you, our teachers of the year. Now, every teacher, or most teachers aspire to be the Teacher of the Year, but every teacher is jealous of this school. These are the retirees. They are leaving us. And some of them were sad, or all of them were sad to see go. But you know, it's a great time in education. When you have a great career, you can go out. And we do wanna highlight our retirees today. So we've got these retirees we're gonna recognize. Sue Gibbons. Stephanie Grisham. Paula Henderson. Pat Lee, this is Nurse Pat Lee. Lauren Melton. Anna Rainey. Ginger Rosati. Christine Westbrook. And Stacy Walker. All right, congratulations. Next, we're gonna recognize our District One Director for the Georgia Association of Educators, GAE. We have a district director in our district, Ms. Shelley Buck. Come on down, Ms. Buck. All right, thank you. Next, we have the PHS Beta was a school merit and a school distinction. Their sponsors are, oh, he's here. Ms. Hobgood, come on down. I don't know what she said, but you didn't look at it.
I told him it's actually Dr. Hobgood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start over. That's Dr. Hobgood. Let's give her a round of applause. Dr. Hobgood and Ms. Nix do a great job with the Beta. They really do. Thank you. Take a picture. We're good? We're not good. See, Mary said we're not good. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Kristy. Next up, we're gonna recognize our Georgia Milestones ELA ICT Item Review, or test, Rhonda Lane. Ms. Rhonda Lane. Ms. Lane has been a longtime academic coach at Hill City. She does a great job. Next, Cory, we're gonna skip. The next, we're gonna do the individual teacher recognitions. First, we're gonna bring up Ashley Smith. Come on down, Ashley. Ashley has successful certification in special training, University of Florida Literacy Institute Model Classroom and Teacher Training. She got picked out for that, working outside in the Southeast Region, representing Pickens County. So good job, Ashley. Next, we got Calli Duncan. Successful completion of, successful completion of Georgia Council of Administrators for Special Education Administrator Development Academy. Come on down, Calli. You good, Mary? Good enough. All right. Thank you, Calli. All right, the next group we're gonna do is the district. We only have two more. We're gonna make it eight in here. We only got two more. The District Literacy Impact Team. That's the Lit Team. These are teachers from across the district who met four times this year to train on re-deliterate formation for new ELA standards. This team was critical to developing the professional learning for their colleagues and resources, including pacing guides, to support teachers next year. So these are some district leaders helping literacy, the most important thing you probably do in the school system, is teach kids to read. We're gonna recognize them and come up, we'll probably recognize them as a group. So hold your applause then. Holly Riley, Kim Karon, Beth LaFawn Nash, Rhonda Lane, Brittany Gaddis, Jenna Myers, Amanda Abbott, April Floyd, Casey Fawcett, Grace Hensley, Ashley Smith, Michelle Satterfield, Rebecca Goss, Beth Romesberg, Julie Spong, Jenna Smith, Olivia Rhodes, Jamie Morgan, Jennifer Connelly, Angie Wright, Kate Purdy, Tiffany Green, Angela McDonald, Kaylin Ensley, Missy Kuiper, Lauren Kilchrist, Missy Norton, Kristy Hobgood, Dr. Kristy Hobgood, Judith Barber, Ryan Neal, Peggy Ellison, Caitlin Rafield, Liz Prather, Amy Childers, Deanna Mosley. All right, Lit Team. Go Lit Team. All right, so last, I said it's our last recognition. Mr. Harris had an epistle he wanted to read. I'm scared to let him. But I wanna recognize our bus shop. So every few months, I tell you guys an operation report. How the bus fleet is really good, and I brag on them. And I don't do anything, I just report it. So our, the results of our, we have, we have a state inspection every year. The recent inspections were exceptional. Each year, the Department of Driver Services expects condition of each of these school buses, the shop was 99.003 effective on a recent state inspection. And the state inspectors noted the exceptional condition of our buses and referred to our buses as the gold standard. These are the men that take care of them every day. Nathan Hambeau, Foreman, Ben Bowman, and Stevie Allen. And I wrote right here, Ben Bowman unable to attend for baseball, but he's able to attend because we swept them boys yesterday. Get in there, Mr. Harris. Get in there. Come on, get in there. Yes, come up here. Yeah, this is Todd Harris, the transportation as well. Yeah, this is a great group right here. They work hard every day for students, and you wouldn't normally see them. So you students up there, you wouldn't see these guys. They make sure everything works. Great job. Let's give them one more round of applause. Dr. Thomas is gonna conclude our recognitions. Now, if you guys wanna hang around for financial reports and other things of that nature, you feel free to. It's a public speaking, but typically this is what people do. So feel free to. Let's clear the room. Congratulations. Okay, this time, I'll turn the program over to our Chief, Angela Loach, Miss Amy Smith, to give us a.
Just to remind y'all, as part of our strategic plan goal number four, organizational operational effectiveness, we present our financial reports each month to be in compliance with state requirements. Our general fund, our revenue we collected in April was 83.4% of our budgeted revenue and expended 67.22% of the approved budget. Our consolidation of funds reflects the expenditures and transfers made through the month of March. Remember, that's on a delay. It takes about three weeks to get transfers approved through federal programs, and we will do those transfers shortly for the month of April. Debt service, the school district has no debt. We are actually probably one of the only systems in the state of Georgia who has no debt. Capital outlay, our expense revenue for the month of April was $757,242.50. We collected $2,49,415.7 in GSFIC funds. That is for Phase One at the high school. So we've collected part of our money. We earned interest of $781.57. Our expenditures totaled $619,301.79. And our month-end squash balance was $11,490,189.96. Special revenue funds, we have collected 75.83% of our budgeted revenue and expended 78.17% of our budgeted expenditures. Mind y'all, those are pool funds. We have to spend it first to get the reimbursements. Just an update, we will be concluding our FY '24 Georgia Department of Office and Accounts Audit shortly. It will, we will do an exit interview hopefully next week. Once that is complete, it goes actually to the state for a third review. It's under second review now, and then it will probably still be about four weeks before y'all receive an email version of the '24 audit. And I will check back with you probably next month to make sure everybody received it. Do y'all have any questions?
Now, on to action items. Do you have a motion to approve the personal action report as presented?
One more. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. And we have a request for revision of policy JDCB. Do y'all have a motion to approve the request for revision of policy JDCB on resident students as presented? Is there any further discussion? All in favor. The following items are on the consent agenda tonight. Financial reports, out of state overnight full trips, minutes from the following board meetings. April 10th, 2025 call board meeting. April 10th, 2025, regular board meeting. May 2nd, 2025, call board meeting, board session. Surplus, CTAE, HCPS, Media Center, and warehouse. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So would.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
No, ma'am, we have not.
May I open the board up for comments if you have any?
Mr. Parker, I think we do have one student we have recognized this time. Olivia, Olivia, our student, Superintendent's Advisory Council.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a board comment. Just, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and if you don't appreciate at least one teacher in the history of your educational career, then I feel sorry for y'all. A lot of teachers that taught me that God bless them. It wasn't easy, but here we are, and I appreciate them. I appreciate all the ones that worked here. I mean, without y'all, what would we do? Because I'm not gonna do it. So, congrats. Thank you.
So you're just being honest?
I am. I'm not gonna do it.
I think the next time all of us are together, it'll be graduation, and then the school year will be over. It's gonna be horrific this year. I know that'd be perfect. Everything'd be perfect, but I thank God.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? Do you have your second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned at 6:00.